Call the meeting to order of the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, July the first, two thousand and twenty-five, if you would be so good as to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands before us.
Thank you.
Is there a live mic someplace?
Yes.
I believe the applicant and Commissioner Mittelstadt are joining by total communications devices. Thanks to Alexander Graham Bell. Next item on the list, could we please do a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Bayless?
Here.
Commissioner Mittelstadt?
May I have a minute?
Here.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present.
The, we do have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes or anything else? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, no final updates or anything? Hearing none. Those in favor, please slowly say aye, so I can count the ayes.
Aye.
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 And aye.
It's approved unanimously by voice vote. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I had a couple of questions and an update. Does anyone else have any comments? First one is, I noticed in the minutes, under the date and before the location, we didn't say it was a special meeting, so we probably should do that. And the next one is, the second page under my comments, I don't know if I said the word director with the Grant County Chamber of Commerce, if I did, we ought to add the word director is who I met with, not the full chamber, and if I didn't, I just wanted to let everyone know that I met with the director and a couple of the staff, but not the members of the commission itself. But those are my only comments. Do I hear perhaps a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
For June the thirteenth of this year, we have a motion to approve the minutes, as, with a couple of possible corrections. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 And aye, the minutes are approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is reports. Are there any reports that aren't going to be covered later on in the agenda? Hearing none, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. So I need to explain a few things. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means that we follow very rigid rules, in order to ensure that there's due process to everyone who wishes to speak. We do follow Robert's Rules of Order, so that before speaking, one attracts the attention of the mayor, so that one can be recognized. There is a rule that no person may speak twice until all others have spoken at least once. I thought I would mention that.
So noted.
The first...
So noted.
So noted, thank you very much. We are now going to open a public hearing for Zone Change twenty-five dash zero one, a zone change request for one tract of land from commercial highway zoning to mixed-use zoning district. The property is legally described as subdivision Moores, number four, lot thirteen through lot fifteen, east five foot of lot fifteen being zero point two four one acres, addressed as twenty-two forty Pinos Altos Road. The applicant is Kent Allen Kelly. And during this hearing, when making motions, unless there's an objection, you can simply refer to Zone Change twenty-five dash zero one, as far as the commissioners go. I imagine the community developer will read it all over again, but does anyone on the commission, have you had any private discussions with the owner of the property, or do you have any financial interest? And I will ask again for the ayes first, one at a time, and the noes second. Hearing no ayes, how about the noes? Do we have any noes?
No.
No.
No. We've had no ex parte.
Right.
We've, I've heard five noes, therefore there is, there are no conflicts of interest, so there is a quorum and we can continue. This is a zone change which is different to some of the other hearings that we do. A zone change is a recommendation to the town council. We will have a presentation from town staff, from the applicant, and as we proceed with debate, there will eventually be a motion. Regardless of how commissioners feel, all motions are phrased in the positive, and that has caused some confusion in the past. The presiding officer, which happens to be me, does the direction of questions and answers should be directed through me? This makes life not easier for those who take the minutes. Anyone who wishes to testify or speak needs to be sworn in. I wonder if we could do that? And the idea is to approach the podium, or wherever you are, and this also applies to the applicant, who I understand is on the phone. I will read the, I state your name.
Aye, Jackie Lee.
Aye, Kent Kelly.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I shall give in this matter in this hearing?
That the testimony that I shall give in the matter of this hearing?
That the testimony I shall give in the matter of this hearing?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury?
Shall be the truth.
Great.
Shall be the truth, nothing but under penalty of perjury.
Thank you, and we need to keep a log of those who are sworn in. As far as I can see, we haven't had any emails or letters sent in that aren't in the record, okay? Would staff be kind of...
Okay.
Oh, thank you. Would staff be kind enough to read their report?
Request ZC twenty-five dash one, Zone Change Request for One Tract of Land for Commercial Highway Zoning to Mixed Use Zoning District. The property is legally described as subdivision Moores, number four, lot thirteen through lot fifteen, east five foot of lot fifteen, point zero two one four acres, as, addressed as twenty-two forty Pinos Altos Road. The applicant is Kent Kelly, represented by Aaron Palmer. On May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, Kent Kelly completed the application for a zone change for the subject property. The subject site is point, point two four one acre lot with a single-family home built in nineteen forty-eight. The current zoning of the property is commercial highway. According to the Land Use and Zoning Code of two thousand and ten, section three point one point eight, highway commercial district is intended to accommodate a mix of broad commercial uses serving residents and visitors, including businesses that are highly accessible to vehicles. This district is intended for employment activities and uses that may be more intense than the historic downtown commercial and light commercial districts in the creation of traffic, noise, and lights. Higher-density residential buildings and mixed-use buildings containing residential units that do not front the highway are appropriate. Previously, the Land Use Code of nineteen sixty did not restrict single-family residential uses in the commercial zone. Section four, commercial zone, the following regulations apply to the commercial zone. A, use. The property in the commercial zone may be used for any permitted use in residential zones. An amendment was made in ordinance six thirty in nineteen seventy-eight to restrict the construction of new one or two-family dwellings within the commercial zone. In the Land Use Code of nineteen ninety-nine, the verbiage pertaining to residential uses in the commercial zone was removed and replaced with the use table in section three point two. The use table section displayed single-family residential and duplexes are prohibited within the commercial zone. The use of households living in a single-family detached home in the commercial highway zone is not allowed in the Land Use and Zoning Code of two thousand and ten, section three point two, use table. Since the home was constructed prior to the adoption of the two thousand and ten code, the home is considered a nonconformity and regulated by Article seven. Article seven, section seven point one point one states, "Any use lawfully occupying a building or land on the effective date of the Land Use Code or of subsequent amendments to it that does not conform to the regulations of the Land Use Code as adopted or amended, or which is not specifically addressed in the Land Use Code, shall be deemed a nonconforming use and may be continued, and the right to engage in such use shall run with the land subject to conditions of this article. No changes in type, scale, or intensity of use are permitted, except those resulting in a conforming use." Article seven, section seven point six, abandon or discontinuance of conforming uses or buildings states, "When a nonconforming use is discontinued for a consecutive period of one year, the property involving, involved thereafter may be used only for conforming purposes. If the home at twenty-two forty Pinos Altos Road was uninhabited for more than a year, the property could no longer be used as a single-family residence. The Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and seventeen, pages three through twenty-four, C, Development Regulations, Zoning, the town shall coordinate land use and community design goals with the goals of other planning elements such as housing, community design, transportation, and economic development. The Town Development Regulation shall reflect this integrated approach in planning to ensure all new development has beneficial influence on the quality of life to improve future opportunities for the community. The zoning map shall be updated to reflect all categories and current uses. Individual amendments to the official zoning map on a case-by-case basis like this request provide the town and its residents some flexibility in meeting the long-term goals of the Land Use Code of two thousand and ten. Based on the objectives of the Town's Comprehensive Plan and the Land Use Code, the town hopes to align the official zoning map with the Land Use Code, the comprehensive plan, property owners' wishes, and the way the town has grown and developed. By amending the official zoning map to mixed use on the subject property, the town would be moving the property into conforming, conformity, and allowing the use of single-family residential to run with the land. The mixed-use zone can also accommodate small-scale commercial, including doctors' offices, clinics, and restaurants, like the restaurant located across the street to the north, or other commercial uses, including grocery stores and general retail stores. After a departmental review of the application, code enforcement utilities, fire, police, public works, engineering, and meters division had no comment. As required by section six point two point eleven of the Land Use Code of two thousand and ten, the Community Development Department contacted twenty property owners as identified by Grant County Assessor Parcel Data within three hundred feet of the affected property by U.S. Mail regarding the zone change. Two responses were received during the citizen participation process. One respondent requested clarification on what the application was asking for. The other respondent asked if the zone change would affect the taxes on their property. Ms. Alea stated that the change only affects the subject property. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to town council about the request at hand, it shall, at minimum, make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance, or not in substantial compliance, with the Town's Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation and goals and policies of the Town's Comprehensive Plan, or it will adversely affect the implementation and goals of, and policies of the Town's Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the Town's Comprehensive Plan, in error of the assumptions about the property's surrounding uses, population forecasts, rates of land consumption, or other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the health, safety, or welfare, and will promote the original uses of the Land Use Code, or it will adversely impact the public health, safety, and wealth, general welfare, and will not promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment responds to changes in conditions such as changes in assumption on capital improvements, road locations, population trends, lands committed for development, density, and other uses of further study that have been completed since the adoption of the Land Use Code, or it does not respond with changed conditions. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation, or the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. It is the recommendation of the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend the map amendment slash zone change to the town council as it meets the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the Town's Comprehensive Plan. Success also depends on the town creating conditions for more and better development within the town. A successful infill strategy will support the creation of livable neighborhoods and communities, chapter three, page twenty-two of the Town's Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and seventeen. Accomplishments of the twenty, two thousand and four Comprehensive Plan, Mixed Use Zoning, enable infill development, chapter five, page twenty-two of the Town's Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and seventeen. Goal one, prioritize safe housing for residents in Silver City, chapter five, page thirty-six of the Town's Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and seventeen. And policy, ensure the towns of Silver City pursues all avenues for a mixture of fair and affordable housing for all income levels, chapter five, page thirty-six, Towns of Silver City Comprehensive Plan of two thousand and seventeen. Additional finding, the proposed amendment does not adversely affect the implementation and the goals of the policies of the Town's Comprehensive Plan. The change does not constitute as a spot zoning since the mixed-use regulations comply and are consistent with the surrounding residential and commercial uses. Finding four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact public health, safety, welfare, and general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. And finding seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility to meet the objectives of the Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code.
And does that conclude your presentation in chief?
Yes, Chairman.
It does. Does any commissioner have any immediate questions for, on the staff report?
No.
I would like to ask the applicant if you would care to do a presentation, and if you could address the required findings, that would be most helpful.
Okay. My name's Kent Kelly. Okay.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration of this matter, and I'd like to tell you how I think this variance would not adversely affect the implementation and goals and policies of the Town's Comprehensive Plan. I also agree that it is in substantial compliance with the, with what the plan intends, and it will not adversely affect the, the public health, safety, or general welfare, but the one I wanted to focus on was the, not adversely affecting the implementation goals and the policies of Town's Comprehensive Plan. So the mixed-use definition can be found on page sixteen of the Town's Comprehensive Plan, and it says, retail, neither commercial uses, mixes residential, mixed use includes parcels of land that have more than one use co-located on a single parcel either in adjacent buildings, residuated in a single building. The exact would be a small retail establishment on the first floor and residential on the second floor. Mixed use in neighborhood centers have been recognized as desirable land use pattern. Also, page twenty-two is, was previously mentioned, they talk about infill opportunities, as far as being able to bring reasonably priced businesses into, into neighborhoods. Page fifty-three of the Town's Comprehensive Plan, it mentions the, oh, let me see here, it mentions the number of, of businesses, there's eight hundred and thirteen businesses registered with Town Silver City. Many businesses in Silver City are small owner-operator business comprised of one or more members of a single household. So the, the opportunity if, if this zoning change was to go through, it would create a lower down payment opportunity, and, and it would provide a great work-live opportunity for a new business at a, at a entry-level price. Pages thirty-three and thirty-five also bring up the need for affordable housing both for the general public and for senior citizens, and this is a, this is a place that's been made very safe, it's very nice, and I think it could, I think that it could be great as far as a mixed-use, a relaxed scenario goes. It's been a residence since the late forties, as have many others in the neighborhood, and I just think it would be a, a great opportunity to get somebody in, it'll lower, lower initial cost than being able to grow their business on the same property they live in. I appreciate you hearing my points and considering this matter.
Thank you. Does that complete your case in chief?
Excuse me?
Does that complete your presentation?
That does, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any immediate questions for the applicant? And Commissioner Mittelstadt, did you get to hear all that?
I did, thank you.
Okay. A question?
Proceed.
Yes. Who resides in the property currently? Pardon me, but who resides in the property currently?
Well, I do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a, I've been, somewhat part-time, I've been traveling for work here lately.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we don't have anyone in the audience, I do need to ask, is there anyone who is logged in who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to the application? Not hearing a response, I would like to move for a short recess to go into executive session under the provisions of NMSA seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one, H three. During that executive session, we are limited to only discussing issues that have been brought forth in the hearing so far. And secondly, no decisions can be made. When we come out of the executive session, I will then ask for a roll call vote to verify from each of the commissioners that we honor those restrictions. So we have a motion? I am making the motion to go into an executive session?
You have your own decision. You have your own.
Yes, thank you. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Could we do a roll call to go into executive session?
Commissioner Stone?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Aye. Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Commissioner Mittelstadt?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
The roll call is unanimous, and we will now go into executive session. We will come back in about ten minutes. I call the meeting back to order, and I'm required to read a statement, and we do a roll call to affirm that this is correct. We are reopening the regular commission meeting. I am now reading a statement regarding the closed session that will be included in the minutes. It's page forty-two of the commissioner's handbook, roughly. After I finish reading the statement, I will ask the commission to approve the statement, so that will be a roll call vote. Here's the statement. "The matter discussed in the closed session was limited only to the topic as stated in the agenda, and no action was taken during the closed session." Does the commission approve this statement, and if we could please do a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Commissioner Mittelstadt?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
The motion by roll call passes unanimously. Is there any discussion or questions that any commissioner would like to ask either of the applicant or of staff? I've not heard anything, in which case I would entertain a motion. I would remind you that motions are always phrased in the positive, regardless of how you intend to vote, and secondly, please state which findings by number, and they are in the staff report, when you make the motion. The motion would be along the following lines, that you move to approve recommending to the town council that they approve the zone change as specified, and if you wish to abbreviate it, we mentioned that earlier, you can simply say Zone Change twenty-five dash zero one, and which findings you believe have been met.
I, yeah. I move to approve the, I move to approve the zoning request change here for Project ZC twenty-five oh one, with an aye to, we recommend this to the city council to approve this, and the findings that seem to apply are findings number one, the, it is in substantial compliance with the Town's Comprehensive Plan, and number four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the neighborhood or the general nature of things in that neighborhood.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve recommending to the county council that they approve the Zone Change Request, ZC twenty-five dash zero one, with findings one, two, and seven. I do have a question, I noticed that finding number four was also in the staff report. Did you wish to include that, or just leave it at one, four, and aggression, one, two, and seven?
That's, yes, go ahead and change it to one, two, and seven.
We have a...
Although four does apply, but one, two, and seven, if that's what the, the report includes, that's, that's for the best, one, two, and seven.
We're sticking with one, two, and seven, and is there a second on that to reconfirm it?
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Bayless?
None from here.
Commissioner Mittelstadt?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
No.
Commissioner Stone?
No.
In which case, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Commissioner Mittelstadt?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes which recommends to the town council that they formally approve the zone change, Request ZC twenty-five dash zero one. I should point out that any decisions that we make, or by the way, the town council makes, are subject to appeal. or by the way, the Town Council makes, are subject to appeal. Anyone who has standing can appeal this. There's a very rigid timeline. And to do that, you have to say why you have standing, why you have a right to cause an appeal. And secondly, you must state the grounds for the appeal to show that there was a flaw in the commission's understanding. Anyone who wishes to do that should contact the Community Development Director to verify when the appeal timeline opens and how long it stays open. Before closing the hearing, are there any final comments on this application? Commissioner Stone?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
No.
Commissioner Bayless?
None.
Commissioner Middlestadt?
No.
And me, no. With that, this closes the hearing. The next item on the agenda is continued business. I do not see any. Next item is new business. I do not see any. That leaves us with reports from staff.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. I would just like to inform you all, we have a new planner and GIS mapper. Her name is Emily Eagle, and she is in the audience today. She has already been a delight to have in the department and as well as very knowledgeable and helpful to the public, so we are happy to have her joining us. And aside from that, we have another case, a public hearing for next month. And also would like to discuss the potential of a subcommittee within the Planning and Zoning Commission for two things. One being orchestrating an open house to be able to collect public input for the Land Use and Zoning Code update, and another to investigate a mass zone change along the Highway fifteen slash PA road corridor. With the two applicants that we have had over the last year, it has identified that the nonconforming uses are showing to be somewhat of a detriment to property owners that own residential property. So discussions with the chairman, we would like to investigate if property owners within that corridor would be interested in getting a zone change to be able to have their property come into conformity with the Land Use Code and also be able to assist in any future inquiries about the property regarding residential uses since it is currently zoned commercial.
Would you recommend that the committee be a subset of this commission? Or did you wish, which would take longer, to open it up to members of the public?
I would leave that up to the discretion of the committee, whichever they would prefer. I know you all have been integral in, you know, information gathering regarding the Land Use Code, the Land Use Code update, as well as experience some of these zone changes and have a lot of familiarity with the nuances between commercial, mixed-use, and residential properties. So I would value the opinion of the commission foremost. But if you are interested in involving the public with, I would say, the open house, that could be something that we could orchestrate. But as far as the zone change process, I would prefer if it was restricted to the members of the commission as you are appointed members that understand these type of regulations.
Just making a note. Thank you.
I'm just tired of committing something like that right now. I was thinking about it, sorry.
I couldn't hear.
Commissioner Middlestadt would prefer to be not on a committee, a subcommittee at this point.
Would prefer not to be?
Just today, just like, I need a week.
She needs some time to process the request before she will commit to any subcommittee at this time. She will not commit at this time. But she is ready to entertain the proposal in the future.
Okay, any additional reports from staff?
Not at this time.
And next item on the agenda is?
So you don't need a commitment right now at this point for either of those?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah. Next item on the list is reports from commission, and normally we go in inverse order, but given that development, I would like to make a couple of comments. The director is absolutely right. In my six years on the commission, we've had a number of zone change requests. The chairman at the time, Commissioner Seibel, pointed this out, that we need to think of better ways of doing it. And however, time being what it was, that didn't happen. When we had the previous zone change request, we also thought of this. And with this one, the director has raised a very good point. Time we did something. So I would like to give previous notice that at our next PNC hearing, we will commit or refer to ourselves as a committee. And I would therefore like you to think who will chair it in our commission, and how many commission members ought to be involved. It does not have to be all five. It's a subcommittee. So if in the next month you could think about your thoughts, that will be a motion that will be made. And I would be inclined to keep it as a subcommittee, just of the commission, with five or less members. But for public involvement, as always, we can have public input, and that would solve that problem. Because it's important we do hear from the community. So that is my previous notice, which is required, something like that. That is my report. Commissioner Middlestadt, have you any reports?
I do not.
Commissioner Bayless, have you any reports?
Just a point of inquiry. It's a housekeeping thing. Folks who come here need to swear. But is there some mechanism where we are sworn? Is it ingrained? I mean, is it way back when we first came on? That's when it was done? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But we're sworn in by our friends.
Yeah.
And so was I. Commissioner Moody, have you any?
I don't think so, no.
Commissioner Stone?
Only to remark that I noticed we omitted the salute to the New Mexico flag. I don't know if that's customary to be included, but I'd actually memorized it for tonight on the recommendation of Jackie. Because I thought, rightfully so, she described it as a beautiful statement. So I would ask whether that is something that is normal.
No, they're arranged.
What was that?
The, I can respond to that. I have noticed that the county and the Town Council do the salute to the New Mexico flag. I would point out that section two point three of the bylaws, section A, only includes the pleasure of allegiance. I can give previous notice to a change to the bylaws to add the salute to the New Mexico flag, so that will also be a motion in our next meeting, which will be August. Wow, the year's going by. So if you think about that, and if someone would give me the words, that wouldn't harm either. I do actually have the words, and I've wondered about it. So thank you very much for raising it. Any other comments from the commissioners? Not hearing any. Any other comments from staff?
Not at this time.
In which case, I do hear a motion, or I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion to adjourn. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
Aye.
Thank you. For adjourn.